All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the June meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight, we have five members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. First item on our agenda is roll call Mario De Fulvio. Joe D'Angelo is absent. Chris Judge. Fantastic. Kelly Weiss is absent. Manny Priest. All right, and Steve Cepresaw. All right. All right. Second item on the agenda is election of chair and vice chair, but I think we're going to push that to the end of the meeting. Nobody objects. All right. Next item would be approval of minutes. Oh. I'll make a motion to table the election of chair and vice chair till the end of the meeting. Sorry, by Chris, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, five in favor, zero opposed. All right. Approval of the May. Minutes. Anybody have any? Questions, comments? Issues with the May minutes? And if not, anybody want to make a motion to approve? All right, motion to approve by Steve. Second by Manny, all in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed. All right, four in favor, one abstention. That still passes, I assume. All right, passes.
Should we vote on the minutes from, oh, sorry.
That's a good question. I forget who. Who abstained last time?
I have to abstain and default you. So.
Oh, yeah.
We have enough. People.
Would it be two votes and? April, okay.
Oh, okay.
We'll have to. We'll have to wait for April's minutes until July. All right. But good point. Thank you for reminding because. We may never approve those.
The meeting that will.
All right. Next item on the agenda. Are secret determinations? We have no secret determinations, so the next item on the agenda is public hearings and final deliberations. In this portion of our meeting, we'll be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we are reviewing your information, so it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of your project to remind us what you're planning. And then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. To our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any members of the applicants team that are planning to speak for a public record. And anyone from the community that will be speaking in regards to a project tonight, please also start off by stating your name and address for our records. Tonight, our first public hearing is for the applicant Thomas Grosso. Project address is thirty-one to thirty-three Pine Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for a congregate living facility and ground floor office use in an existing mixed-use building in the C four neighborhood commercial district. Welcome.
Good. Thank you. So my name is Thomas Crosso. My address is fourteen Priory Court, Melville, New York. And we're here for. Approval for a congregate housing permit for the property thirty-three Pine Street. So this is in regards to the redevelopment of both thirty-one and thirty-three Pine Street. In our last meeting, we provided the site plan, which we reviewed with the committee. We have adequate parking, garbage removal space, no removal space. And there's been no changes to the plan other than a slight alteration of the parking lot. Parking, parking space fifteen was moved down toward the bottom of the lot, and that's a handicap space.
All right. Any questions, comments, concerns before we open the public hearing? Chris?
There you go. A question for the applicant. I'm looking right now on. Page two of the site plan. And I guess I'd like, could you give some clarification? I see. On both the first floor and the second floor. There are some hashed off areas labeled rest area. What are the rest areas?
It would just be an extension of the living room.
There a reason why they're separately marked?
Not sure. My engineer Brian Doak, he made this plan and called it a rest area. It could be used as a dining room area or just an extension of the living room.
Okay. The reason I'm bringing this up, maybe for Tito and for others on staff. I'm especially nervous that the one on the first floor. It's got three walls around it. It's looks to be of a nearly identical set of dimensions to a bedroom. I am worried that these could be nothing against the applicant, but maybe the app of successor owner could turn these into illegal unauthorized bedrooms if we're not careful. So I'm not sure if there's something could be done in a potentially revised floor plan, like for example. Moving or removing that closet so that this is not so. Easily marked off and you throw up some plywood and some drapes and bang, you got another illegal bedroom. That's my concern with the current floor plans.
Absolutely.
Nothing against you personally, but once we approve these things, who knows what future owners will do. Yeah, that that's a concern that I have, having reviewed these.
Yeah, no, there, there, there is the open. It's a full opening. There's no partition separating that from the living room. It's just sort of an alcohol. You, I mean, that you can. Ask. The applicant to make bedroom eleven. That that full space if if the board thinks that's appropriate, or. You can request changes to the floor plan.
Is is one thing to maybe. Oh, concern to reduce my concern. I can't speak very well. Maybe nobody else cares, but well, one thought I would have is if the door to bedroom eleven. Is moved to the, is there directions? Cardinal direction somewhere on this plan.
The south side of the wall.
If the.
In the rest area.
If the, yeah, so if it's moved to the north wall, which is the south wall of rest area ten. That would eliminate my concern that some future person turning rest area ten into bedroom number forty-five. And likewise, on the second floor. Moving the door on bedroom twenty-one. So that's now on that wall against rest area twenty. Again. Reduces my concern that someone will turn that into legal bedroom one hundred and twenty-two. In the future.
I think that makes sense. That's something that if the planning commission wants to. Request that. You could vote tonight, subject to a revised floor plan showing those changes. Where those bedrooms are accessed from the rest area. That's something you could do.
The only comment that I would have is. If that's the recommendation of the board, I would do that, but it would render that space almost useless because you would only, you wouldn't be able to utilize that wall either for a couch or a TV or some sort of furniture that tenants would be able to use since there would be a door there. That would be the only concern. But again, if it's the recommendation, then we can alter the plan.
If you, if you put the door off to one side rather than centering it on that wall. You could still have the sofa that you're showing across that wall. And something to the left of the door, TV or whatever.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Before we open a public hearing? All right. All right, so let's open the public hearing for. The applicant Thomas Grosso. The project address is thirty-one to thirty-three Pine Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for a congregate living facility and ground floor office use in an existing mixed-use building in the C four neighborhood commercial district. If there's anyone who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. Oh, it's right up here. Once I, is the green light on them?
Better?
Perfect, thank you.
John Patterson, one eighty-four Helen Street, Binghamton, New York. This is just a curiosity question. What is on the, what is on the property right now?
Say that one more time. What is?
What is on the property right now? What built, what kind of buildings?
There's. Two buildings on the property right now.
They're, they're residential buildings?
Yes.
Yeah, so. The building on the corner had a, had a commercial space on the ground floor. That's going to remain commercial. The rest of that building is residential and then the house on the adjacent lot will remain residential.
So all those are going to be leveled and rebuilt?
No, it's just an interior. Remodel.
Okay, okay.
There, there is work on the parking lot as well.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. All right, anybody else have any question or not question, any comments about? Thirty-one to thirty-three Pine Street? All right. Seeing nobody else and Tito, we didn't get any letters. Submitted for this project. All right, I'll close the public hearing. If you come back up. All right, anybody? Everybody? Agreed with Chris's? Conditional approval?
I agree, and I believe we discussed requiring that the parcels are combined as well.
Yes, at the last meeting, we talked about the parcels being combined. Are you opposed to that?
Is that a requirement or recommendation?
I guess at this point, it's a question for you. Would you be opposed to that being a requirement?
The only, the only downside of that would be with potential financing in the future. Having them combine, it would be much difficult than upstate areas to get financing on two properties versus two separate or owning one outright and just financing one.
Okay.
Tito, I see there's a, the staff comment says the parcels should be combined. Is the, is the reason why the city or the planning staff has a preference for the parcels being combined?
When you have parking on one lot and the use that's using mostly that parking on another, we prefer to see it combined just to ensure that that parking remains available. It's not a requirement. Parking within two hundred fifty feet is allowed, so.
So I guess the. What ties this together is if you were to sell. One of the buildings. Parking is tied to the other approval. You just, you'd have to include that in your sales.
Okay.
Is anybody opposed to not making it a requirement to combine them?
And just, just some additional comment that I did not mention earlier. We're not making any. This isn't a proposal to change the current layout of the building. So this building probably for the last twenty-five or thirty years has been operated illegally. Or unless it was legal back then, I don't know. So this is the current layout that we're trying to get approval for so we can redo it as it. So we're not making any changes per se to the layout of the structure.
So that, that living room rest area has been operating like that for.
Yeah.
Many years.
Yeah, so this building has been operated, I believe it's thirteen bedrooms. Where legally it should have only had, I think, three, and then it was changed to four per unit. So that's what this application is for, for the congregate, to make the current structure legal.
Gotcha. Steve?
Just a question. I seem to remember from the last time that a variance of some sort was needed for this property. Was that granted by ZBA?
That was not granted because that meeting had to be postponed. And so. If the planning commission wants to make a decision, you can make it subject to the variance being granted next week.
What was the variance?
Sure.
It was for drive aisle width for the parking lot. It's a little too narrow, but the preference is a narrow drive aisle with enough parking spaces. And then the other variance was for part of the ground floor facing Pine Street to be residential. The code requires a full thirty feet along the whole facade. So he's just doing part of it as commercial, part of it is residential.
Okay. All right. Chris, does that change the, your thoughts on the door location since it's been operating? Okay. Are you okay? Yep, doing that? Okay, everybody else okay with that? All right.
We just need to do seeker first.
Let's see, so this. So let's see, so this one was a type two, right? For redoing. Okay. All right. Chris, you want to make the motion for site plan review and special use permit or?
I don't know if I have all that.
Okay, all right. All right, well, so this one, I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. Subject to the doors. All right, let's see, so the door. Leading into bedroom eleven is shifted to the wall. Along the rest area ten. And that the bedroom twenty-one door is shifted to the wall along rest area twenty on the floor plans. And contingent on the applicant receiving ZBA approval for the variances. All right. All right, so again, by Chris, all in favor? All right, that's five in favor, zero opposed. All right.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, our last public hearing tonight is for the applicant Wallison Corp. Project address is one ninety-one Front Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of one mixed-use building with six thousand square feet of ground floor drive-through commercial space and two studio units. Fifty-eight one-bedroom units and sixteen two-bedroom units. And the construction of one four-story multi-unit dwelling with sixty-four one-bedroom units and sixteen two-bedroom units in the C four neighborhood commercial district. Welcome back.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Would you like me to, where would you like me to begin? From the beginning or? What would you like me to describe?
If you just give us a brief overview or reminder of what you're doing and then if anything's changed between last meeting and this meeting, that'd be great.
Nick, if I could also add that, could you please go over the difference between the two alternates? Just to recap that.
So. You previously granted approval on this project on March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. For hundred and twenty-five dwelling units. And twelve thousand square feet of commercial ground floor space in two four-story structures. Since then. Our reason for coming here last time was to change the unit count in one of the buildings. Which is the one on Front Street. So. The other, the unit count for the other building remains unchanged. So the building on Oak Street will contain a total of eighty units as before, as previous, as before. And sixty-four of those are one bedrooms and sixteen of those are two bedrooms. It's an all residential building. The building on Front Street previously had an approval for twelve thousand square feet of ground floor commercial space. With three floors above containing forty-five residential units. The count of that is irrelevant now. It's not important, like, I'm sure I have it. So now what we are asking for is that the Front Street building to now have two studio units. Fifty-eight one-bedroom units and sixteen two-bedroom units for a total of seventy-six residential units. And we are reducing the commercial space from twelve thousand square feet to six thousand square feet. Containing one of the, you know, containing a drive-through. So. That's. We, so we are calling that the main unit mix. So that's our main goal where. So if you want, I can, I can just run through the main, main unit mix again for the two buildings or.
Sure.
Yeah. So the main unit makes for the Front Street building, which is building A located to be located at one ninety-one Front Street. The main proposed unit mix is two studios. Fifty-eight one bedrooms, sixteen two bedrooms. Seventy-six total units and six thousand square feet of commercial. The main unit makes for building B to be located at one seventy Oak Street. Is sixty-four one-bedroom units, sixteen two-bedroom units. And a total of, for a total of eighty units. We have enough parking for this unit mix. In addition, we are asking for an alternate unit mix. And the. So it'll be one or the other. So the, for the alternate unit mix, our engineers and architects have looked at it that we have the locations of the building will stay the same. The footprints of the building will stay the same, and we have enough parking for the alternate unit mix. And in the alternate unit mix. We are asking for the following in for, for building A to be located at one ninety-one Front Street. We are asking for thirty-five one-bedroom units. And thirty-two two-bedroom units. For a total of sixty-eight residential units and six thousand square feet of ground floor commercial containing a drive-through. And for building B to be located at one seventy Oak Street. We are asking for an alternate, alternate unit mix of thirty-six one-bedroom units and thirty-six two-bedroom units for a total of seventy-two residential units. So I'll now summarize. The total unit mix. For both buildings combined. So the total for building A and B for the main unit mix. We are asking for two studio units. Hundred and twenty-two one-bedroom units. Thirty-two two-bedroom units for a total of hundred and fifty-six total residential units. In addition, six thousand square feet of ground floor commercial space containing a drive-through. And we have enough parking for this. And for, for both buildings combined, buildings A and B, we're asking for an alternate unit mix containing seventy-one one-bedroom units. Sixty-nine two-bedroom units for a total of hundred and forty residential units. And in addition, six thousand square feet of ground floor commercial with a drive-through. And we have enough parking for that also. That's the summary.
So, so just to recap, option one, it's a hundred and fifty-six units total. Six thousand square feet of commercial space. Option two is a hundred forty units total. Same commercial space, same site plan. The only difference is, is the unit mix within the building.
That's right. Yeah. And we have submitted floor plans for all the four mixes that I mentioned.
Okay. All right. Have you already filed for your variances or that'll be next?
I'm not sure. Our attorney has given paperwork. I.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know specifically if she has filed for a variance, but I think that's part of this because the. You can see that the only variance I see is the, in the, in the, in the parking spaces, so. For instance, for total buildings A and B combined. We need a hundred and eighty-eight parking spaces. That's, this is summarized in the architect's letter that we submitted.
Yeah.
We, for buildings A and B combined under the main unit mix, we need a total of hundred and eighty-eight parking spaces. We are providing hundred and eighty-seven. So that would mean requesting a variance for one less parking space. For the alternate unit mix, we need a total of hundred and ninety-one parking spaces. We are providing hundred and eighty-seven. So we are requesting a variance of four less parking spaces.
Okay. Tito, if, if we were wanted to, could we do the, like a five percent reduction? So they don't need variances? Is anybody opposed to us granting a reduction so they don't need to do these variances? I mean, for this number of parking spaces, it seems like it'd be great to get less parking and more green space. Are you, do you have any objection if we do? So the planning commission has the ability to reduce your required number of parking spaces by a certain percentage? Are you opposed to us doing that? So you don't have to go through the variance process for parking?
I'll really appreciate if you, if you give us that.
Okay. Does five percent give us the? Anybody do that math in their head?
Well, you can reduce it up to fifty percent, and so you could just grant the reduction of the of the actual numbers that that he's short.
Yeah, okay.
So reduction of how many spaces was that again?
For the total main unit mix, we need a variance for only one, one less parking space. And for the alternate unit mix. In, we needed variance for only four less parking spaces. So if you grant us five percent, what that will do is that it will just add green space. It will just allow us to add more green space to the project, which could be used for sitting lounging.
Just for the sake of being sort of exact. I would, I would recommend granting a reduction of four spaces rather than a percentage.
Okay. So we'll just say you can provide for less spaces and then you don't have to go through variances at all then.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. All right, any questions or comments before we open a public hearing? All right, so let's open the public hearing and see if anybody's here to speak about the project. All right, so this is the public hearing for the applicant Wallison Corp. Project address is one ninety-one Front Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of one mixed-use building with six thousand square feet of ground floor drive-through commercial space and two studio units, fifty-eight one-bedroom units and sixteen two-bedroom units. And the construction of one four-story multi-unit dwelling with sixty-four one-bedroom units and sixteen two-bedroom units in the C four neighborhood commercial district. If there's anybody who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone.
Sorry, did you say sixty-four, one, one bedroom, sixty-four? Or maybe I've misheard sixty-four.
It is listed as sixty-four, but we'll go with what you, you presented tonight instead.
Yeah.
Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Mark Sorczynski. I'm the operating manager for Botneck Chevrolet, which is right next door to them, one seventy-nine Front Street in Binghamton. So I'm, I'm actually going, I have a series of questions here on behalf of my partner, Mr. Botneck. Who, you know, obviously we've got some vested interest in this project as well. And by the way, we're excited about the prospect of improving our city and improving that space and improving the value of our land so forth, but. Environmentally, and I'm just jumping in here now because I, I do not know the background of what has been done previous to get us to this point. Has either a phase one or phase two been done? Environmental assessment on this project?
That'd be a question for the applicant.
So I'll tell you what, so if you ask us any of the questions. Uh so I'll tell you what. So if you ask us any of the questions, so we don't like to get into a dialogue with the applicant between community members. So if you ask us the questions, we'll ask him and then if you're okay with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Uh just to, if I could ask you, if you don't mind, are you suspect that there's a reason for needing a phase one or phase two? You know, this chemical spills or?
No, uh, I mean, there's no, yeah, there's nothing that I know. Uh however, there is a concern, you know, I mean, obviously, uh even on our property, there was a body shop over there. There was a body shop. Um environmentally, we weren't exactly friendly back in the sixties and seventies. And so
This current property we're discussing was the old, old, among other things, the old, old automobile dealership?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, you know, we've both been here for a long time. So we, we do have that. And and along with that, if the studies have been done, are they available to even look at? That's something we'd be interested in. Uh in in particular for the groundwater and and how and how the flow of the water goes, if there was a study made, there should be something, either it flows south, it flows north, it flows towards a river, it flows away from us, whatever. Um that, that is somewhat of a concern. Um and and we were just interested if it was, if if so, if there was a contamination as a part of the brownfield program, which I don't know. But also, uh, you know, we've been in business for about a hundred years. Obviously, I haven't been there for a hundred years, but uh we, we went through a project in the renewal project on Front Street where there was a tremendous amount of construction, a tremendous amount of dirt and disruption to our business. So coming into this one, I am, I am concerned again. During the process, I mean, is there, can you tell us that there, the access to our business will not be negatively affected during the the process? Have there been any traffic studies done? Uh what is the net effect after this is done as far as the traffic flow? Uh this, this type of thing is is concerning to us because uh between us and Gerard Street is our major arts delivery area. It's where vehicles are dropped for our dealership. And you know, that could be an issue for us if we're going to see disruption. Um it's, it's just something that I think that uh everybody needs to be aware of. Uh and it, it, we just don't need any more negative effect. We, that last time through was not fun. That was not fun at all. In fact, we had road closures where we went a day without being able to get on Gerard Street, days actually. And it was all deflected.
Chris.
I'm going to apologize. I, what, what was this previous project that denied Botnik access to the road for a day or so at a time?
Yeah.
Please educate me because I'm not familiar with this.
Yeah, well, that was when they had the front street renovation when they, when they re, we were doing the uh the roadway. The gateway project. And I wasn't the only business affected, obviously, from, from us all the way to seventeen. Uh route seventeen, you know, the Red Oak Diner, all those businesses down there. That was, it was a disaster for us.
Just a question, if I heard this correctly, when the applicant was speaking, this is basically an amendment of a site plan that was approved by the commission in two thousand twenty one. So at that time, were any studies conducted that would answer some of the questions being brought up by the gentleman here?
There were no traffic studies done at the, at that time, no. We did not have a phase one environmental study produced at that time either.
Okay. Okay.
Well, that answers my question.
Sure.
And and really, you know, I don't, I don't know the feasibility of doing something is we, you're going to be moving a lot of dirt and what have you. Going forward, I, I would think that would be a some concern to the planning board. The, the, the other thing is, um, and there again, I, I may be ignorant in this, but the is, is this project going to be more directed towards student housing or is it more for community housing? If so, has there, are, are there any uh restrictions as far as parties, loud noise, et cetera, uh being considered in this?
Yep, we can ask him. Okay, sure.
That's, that's all I have.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Just two quick comments. As far as um road closures, the applicant would need a street work permit for any of the sidewalk work that's being done. And as part of that process, um the city can ensure that that neighboring property owners would maintain access. The front street project's a little different because that was the reconstruction of the actual road itself. In this case, the, the work should be contained to the parcel and the sidewalks and and the engineering department would would uh in granting that street work permit would make sure that access isn't obstructed long term to any neighbors. And then the other uh question about pollution and water, uh this project does require storm water pollution prevention plan that would be reviewed and approved by the engineering department uh before the issuance of building permits. Because it's over an acre.
All right.
Um, I'm not sure this will answer the question from the, from Mark, um but I will say I'm not sure how accessible this would be. But I do see as part of the stuff that we were provided, there are letters from SWBR, I think that's an engineering firm out of Rochester, and a second letter out of Fagan Engineers, which is, I don't know where they're from, um which talk about one of them talks about storm water and there is some, I don't know if I would call it a traffic study, but they, there's a traffic discussion at least. Um, I'm not sure if they give you the the answers you'd like or want, but somebody at least was doing some home.
Okay. See us. All right. Yeah, any of, any of the information that's been submitted to the city becomes public record. So you have access to to anything that was submitted. All right. While he's doing that, is there anybody else who would like to speak about the project? All right, come on up. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for advising us about this meeting. I'm Cecily O'Neill and I live at one eighty four Helen Street. But I own the house at one eighty four Front Street directly opposite from where this project is being discussed. And I've also been involved in activities around the community where I've seen the urgent need for decent housing. And I'm glad that someone has taken the initiative to provide housing, better quality housing in our community that I hope will be affordable for working families. Um, I do trust that the planning commission will dot all the i's and cross all the t's about environmental concerns. We should all be focused on that, especially in the proximity of the river where we've experienced two severe floods right there on on that, at that location on Front Street in the last several years. So, um I just want to say I think it will be a great improvement from an empty car lot covered with blacktop. Even the blacktop is eroding and that can be a good environmental situation for any of us or for the Shandango River. So thank you for your time and I wish the project goes well.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else who'd like to speak about one ninety one Front? Sure.
My name is John Patterson, one eighty four Helen Street. That was my wife. We own one eighty four uh Front Street, which is across the street from Botniks. And uh I really appreciate the opportunity to come in here and speak. I really believe this project is going to be really great for the neighborhood and for the city. So I'm really encouraged about it, although I do have some questions. I, I've been in um planning before uh and and real estate development. So just some basic questions. First off is you've got a lot of living units in that area going to be coming there. A lot of people. Is the wastewater system ready for that or does that have to be redone? You're going to have a lot of people parking there. How many parking spots? I didn't quite catch how many couldn't quite hear how many parking spaces were, are being allocated. Third is, uh, I haven't heard any discussions on creating green space in the, in that lot at all, maybe some nice green space between uh the sidewalk and the parking lot would be very, very nice. Some some trees that that get are small trees that don't get real over huge uh things of that nature. Uh trees and bushes do uh help our environment and do self the sound of the traffic going by. And the other thing again is because our property is across, cat corner across the street from where this is going to be developed, we are concerned about is the street going to be drug up in our, in front of our neighborhood, in front of our house, excuse me, um because we do have tenants living there and that's going to is that good to uh hinder the access to that parking lot? And so again, I haven't seen any of the plans. I don't know. But people have to come and go in the parking lot. There's no other place to park uh on that street.
Yep.
There's no parking. Uh there is a bus stop right there. And um so there is a lot of pedestrian tra- traffic goes by because of that uh bus stop. And so what I am concerned along that is any runoff that comes off in construction, it will flow right onto our lawn space. Uh so I'd like to see that somewhere addressed, not necessarily at this meeting, but you know, uh the planning uh engineers look at that. But I really encouraged about this and like my wife said, we really need low, middle income housing and this is a great opportunity. In the commercial space, my, and this got nothing to do with planning, but I love to see some type of eating established in there, whether it's a small coffee shop or anything, because there's nothing in that area. Now that the that uh the other restaurant up the street is closed, there, there's a lot of people. Uh so anyway, thank you very much for your time and appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else who'd like to speak about one ninety one Front Street? All right. And Tito, do we get any letters or emails?
We got comments from the county, which we just got today and let me pull that up. So the county reviewed the most current site plan, reiterate that the planning commission should should consider whether or not there is adequate onsite vehicular stacking spaces for the drive through facility. Uh we also continue to suggest that more complete streets elements be added to the parking areas and site development, including painted or raised pedestrian crosswalks, more bicycle parking and landscaping, consistent with the city's complete streets policy. They also agree that all um curb cuts on Front Street should be closed. And they think that uh the amount of curb cuts could be further reduced uh from surrounding streets and that internal circulation should be used to move across the parking lot. I'm assuming a- as opposed to coming in off of Gerard uh and Oak. And that's it.
All right. All right. Well, seeing nobody else approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing. We'll come back up. All right. So a few questions came up. All right. So we'll just start at the beginning. Environmentally, at this point, has anybody done an environmental assessment, phase one or phase two investigation?
Yes, in the very beginning, when we took on uh this project, we, so our, uh, we have a very strong team, which is, uh, so we hired a, a national firm called AEI Consultants. They're all over the United States, but mostly on the East Coast. So we had them uh do phase one, phase two. And we also had them do an estimate for remediation. We needed all this information for us for our financing.
Great.
So th- there is a, from the state government to the federal government, there is nobody more reliable and better in environmental than AI consultants.
Great.
The, our other team members are SWBR architects out of Rochester. They're very well respected in the affordable housing space. Uh the state uh showcases and loves all of their work projects. And for engineering, we hired Fagan engineers from El Myra. And they're also very good. And actually, uh Fagan engineers was chosen by SWBR as their contractor. You can say.
Great.
So yes, phase one and phase two are done and uh a stack about this thick, you know, but including detailed estimates on remediation now. We, sorry.
Is it appropriate to ask the applicants to provide those phase one and phase two reports be part of the official record for this planning commission approval? And that way, if other members of the public want to see what's going on, they can do so?
Yeah, that's not inappropriate. Yeah, that, that can be done.
I would like to, uh, yeah, I, I would like to say that if you can let us be, let us retain, let us uh not having to, to release that to the, to the public because it is proprietary information, like it is for our uh but we can certainly share that with you, but not to be made available to the, to the public. But I can tell you this much, that when you see it, you'll see that it's minimal. I wanted to just mention that, that the most important part of that is the summary, which is that the remediation that's there is minimal, which we were very happy to see. And when, when we saw that, then we closed on the site. Because we still had the option, option of not closing on the site if the environmental was not satisfactory.
Gotcha.
So it's very minimal work.
Okay.
Uh even though it was in a previous day a car dealership. One thing I'd like to mention before I forget is I want to, I'm really happy to see our neighbors. So thank you very much for coming. It's a pleasure to see you. And also Mark is our neighbor. I have uh corresponded with him when there was a snow, like two or three storms uh this past winter. So he was all uh always like offering up his uh pickup truck to see if uh we needed any cleaning.
Yeah.
So I, I've been in communication with him over the storm like three or four times.
Great.
One time he let us know that somebody was trying to break in and the door was open. So, so I'm very happy to see with our uh to hear from our neighbors.
Gotcha.
I appreciate all of the comments. So I, I, I will be happy to share with you the phase one and phase two, but my request is not to make it public.
I don't think that we can do that. If it, if it gets submitted to the city, then it's, it's public information at that point and anyone can request to see something that we receive.
So can I rest, can I request that it not be made a requirement to submit? It's normally an internal information for a developer.
Yeah.
When would a required phase one and phase two where an applicant would be required to submit for public records? Phase one, I guess part of me is the period why this was configured as an old car dealership
If the planning commission requested that study be done because you have. Environmental concerns as part of seeker, or you issue a positive declaration and and state that you have concerns about serious adverse impacts. And require that they do a phase one as part of the environmental impact statement. Um, then that would become public at that point. Um. I guess I don't know the answer to the question of whether or not. Unless you plan on issuing a a positive declaration under seeker. Whether or not you can require him to make that public. I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, this is different because this will just for men. But if some people scratch. And we're like, wow, you're digging up an old nuclear. You know, contaminated site. We could request. We gotta do a phase one and phase two, and that's gonna be public.
I thi- I think you could do that. Yeah, absolutely. Because part of what you're doing is seeker, and so you might not want, you might not feel comfortable issuing a negative declaration without. More information, so you could ask for that.
So I guess the big question is, so we will have to do the seeker checklist tonight if we're moving forward with the project. Is anybody opposed? To answering those questions about environmental uh. Sensitive issues if you have not seen for your eyes.
I have reservation.
Okay.
Right now. And I don't know. I I don't know if I can give a, yeah, we're good to go without knowing what was in the store.
Gotcha. Okay.
I can tell you, I can tell you what, because I naturally I will speak truthfully and I have papers to back it. So previously, a negative sec- uh, secret declaration was issued for this project. Uh, our engineers have done. So SWPP came, SWPP came up. And so that was submitted already. The Fagan engineers did that, and Fagan engineers also did a long form environmental.
Okay.
Uh, so uh. So and a negative secret declaration was issued. There was a little bit of contaminated soil up toward the northern part of the property, like in the middle to to close to the train tracks. And we have an estimation on the remediation. It's a small portion. Um. So it's very minimal.
Okay.
I I even have, like I said, cost estimate and summary. And we were not concerned. It was so minimal that we decided to uh, close on the property.
Okay. So do you mind if I ask? So normally, the remediation plan. Um, would be. Either you don't touch that section of the site and you leave it alone so that it remains undisturbed. Or you have to deal with it. You truck it to a special facility and they deal with it. Uh, uh, wh- which one are you planning to do for that?
The AI can remediation. So AI consultants will actually hire contractors.
Yeah.
To scoop up that little bit of dirt. Out of there and dispose of it environmentally.
Okay.
So they gave an estimate on that.
Okay. Is that uh, is that satisfied? So clearly, they've done their homework and they've they've come up with it. Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right, Chris is thinking. Okay. All right. So that's great. Um. I guess the other couple of questions. So. Without getting into too much detail, you have done a a full stormwater management plan, or you will complete. Um, just so everybody knows, as part of the review process. They will have to submit their stormwater plan, which will be. Um, in compliance with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, or they would not be able to get their permits to do their construction. They will have to submit that to the city um, engineering department. And the city engineering department will have to approve that. So. So stormwater, that's your plan?
Right. Uh, uh, a very thick report SWPP was uh, previous. Uh, was issue was was given with the previous approval. And uh, it was said that. When you do the, like, give a final one when you come for the final permit or something at that time.
Yep. Okay.
We should not be that different from uh, what was initially issued.
Yeah. Okay. So you've got a full, full stormwater plan.
Yeah.
Um, parking spaces. So Tito, just so everybody knows, if anybody wants to see a copy of the plans, how would they do that?
They can send an email to planning@cityofbinghampton.gov and we can show them the plans. We could also share the narrative. Uh, provided by the applicant, which talks about some of the questions that were asked today about um, water service. Uh, and the capacity for uh, water and sanitary. Um. It addresses traffic. It's not a full traffic study, but it does a a address projected traffic. Um, it address it addresses stormwater runoff control. So the narrative addresses a lot of these um, questions. And so if somebody wants to see those documents, they can email planning@cityofbinghampton.gov and make their request.
Okay. Perfect. All right. So that that kind of covers um, parking spaces, green space, trees, um, street closers, uh. Tito already talked about. That would have to be uh, approved by the city and. Most likely would not be approved. It would. Disrupt disruption for your project has to stay on your site.
Understood.
Uh, runoff that's stormwater. Um, there was a question about who your intended rentals are for.
Right. So this is not student housing from the get-go.
Yeah. Great. So no, no students, or it's not intended for student housing. And uh, even though it's not for students, uh. There's a question about parties and noise in the building. You would have a a manager, there's managers in the house.
We have already uh, are speaking with property managers, actual firms um, that will be managing the property. So they will have onsite presence in the, you know, form of building superintendents and property manager onsite. Uh, so definitely not, this this will be very well managed properties.
Great.
We want to make it a an example.
All right. Fantastic.
Uh, just like fifty Front Street, you know, like a proper properly managed uh, facility.
All right. All right. I think that covers. All the questions that were asked. So Tito.
Uh, just one more thing. Yeah, they're showing eight uh, spaces. Um, in the queue for the drive-through, room for eight vehicles. Um, right now. It's proposed to be general retail, and that's six thousand square feet. But i- is that, is your plan to? Change that use in the future because um, if it's sort, if it's a drive-through restaurant or like a Dunkin' Donuts or a chain. Uh, along those lines. You may need more than eight spaces, and we have problems, traffic problems at other Dunkin' Donuts and other drive-to locations throughout the city. Um, so that's just something that we want to. Clear up now, I would think is if that's going to be a restaurant, especially a fast food restaurant at any point, you may need more than eight spaces uh, in that queue.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up. Right now, we haven't uh, started marketing the commercial spaces. But um. We were hoping that some some business like that would. Will be a good anchor tenant. But we can come to you like once we have solid interest on it, like who's gonna take it, then we can come to you if there's any change needed. And while I was uh. Cause our engineer is listening to live to the meeting. He's from Almira. So he texted me a few things about traffic studies if you need to like, you know, like North Sun. When when the question came up, he was listening and he texted me some notes about traffic studies.
Anybody want to hear the? Comments about the traffic study? Are we okay to move on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, concerns, comment?
So the business that you're looking at would definitely be a fast food restaurant then, as opposed to like a. Drive-through drugstore, dry cleaner, pickup, something or other.
We could take that. So let's say if if uh. Business comes along like a Walgreens or something. And they say we want all six thousand square feet. Beautiful. A single tenant is better than two different tenants.
Okay. So you're flexible. It's not like you're set on having a fast food.
We haven't even started marketing yet, the commercial space.
Okay.
So um, single tenant is better. A single national tenant will be better than two separate tenants.
I I would just point out that if it's anything other than retail. Uh, then you would have to come back for that portion. So if it is a restaurant. You would have to come back for review of that of that. Portion. Once you have a tenant.
Okay. And like Dunkin' Donuts would be considered a restaurant.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. That's right. That would be a dream come true. But but yes, you're right.
All right. All right. All right. If there's no other questions or comments. Okay. Sure. Okay.
Um. What I would recommend is. As you go down the items. You can ask for comments or discussion on each item. Chris can state his concerns when he has concerns for a particular item. And then um, once it's time to vote, he can vote no. That's if that's what he thinks um, after going through the list. Um, but you you don't need to vote for each item. You you but you should discuss each item.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Would it be helpful if uh, my engineer dials in and because since has to do with environmental and SWPP? I, would it be helpful if he dialed in? He's on, he's watching right now. Okay.
Yeah, let's uh, let's see what happens and then we could kind of talk.
Okay. No, no problem. I I mind that if it helps you.
Yeah. But we appreciate that though. All right. So I'll make a motion for a negative declaration uh, based on the following items. So impact on land, proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. Um, so yes, but I would say it has a small or no impact for environmental review. Um, impact on geological features, the proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique. Or unusual landforms on the site. Uh, no. Impacts on surface water, the proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. Uh, no. Impact on groundwater, the proposed action may result in new or additional use of ground groundwater. Or have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. So. Gotcha. All right. So I'm going to say in this motion, I'll say um. Small impact on that, and that's where we can agree to disagree. Um, okay.
Think is that because of the? Stormwater pollution prevention plan and i- is that why it you think that that will be mitigated impacts on groundwater erosion, et cetera?
Yes, uh, the the stormwater. Pollution prevention plan and the remediation um. Practices that were described by the applicant. Um, for those reasons, I'd say it is uh, small impact. Uh, okay. Impact on flooding, the proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. Uh, yes, but I would say it's a small impact. Uh, impact on air, the proposed action may include a state regulated air emission source. Uh, no or small impact. Impact on plants and animals, the proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. Uh, no or small impact. Impact on agricultural resources, the proposed action may impact agriculture agricultural resources. No. Impact on aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed action. Um, is obviously different from or in sharp contrast to. Current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. Uh, no or small impact. Impact on historic or archaeological resources, the proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. Uh, no or small impact. Uh, impact on open space and recreation, the proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource. As designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. Uh, no. Impact on critical environmental areas, the proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a cr- critical environmental area. Uh, no. Impact on transportation, the proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. So I would say yes, but it has no or small impact to transportation systems. Uh, and stop me if anybody wants to discuss any of these. Uh, impact on energy, the proposed action may result in an increase in the use of any form of energy, uh, no or small impact. Impact on noise, odor, and light, the proposed action may result in an increase in no noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. Uh, yes, but smaller uh, no impact. For environmental review. Uh, impact on human health, the proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. Okay. All right. All right. So for this motion, I'll say it will have uh, no or small impact. Uh, again, based on the remediation plan that was described tonight by the applicant. Um, consistency with community plans, the proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. Uh, so I would say that's inaccurate and it is consistent with. Adopted land use plans, so it has no or small impact. And consistency with community character, the proposed action is inconsistent with the existing community character. Uh, I would say that that is not true. It is consistent with the existing community character, so it has no or small impact. All right. So based on all of those items on the checklist, I'll make a motion for a negative declaration for seeker review. There a second. All right. Seconded by Manny, all in favor? All right. All opposed? All right. So it's three in favor, two opposed. So what does that mean, Tito?
You could. Uh, make a motion for a positive declaration under seeker. Which would require an environmental impact statement. Which is. Um, a process that we would we would have to go through. Um.
Uh, Tito, what is the? The vote needed? For this to pass? What would the vote numbers need?
Four.
We would need four. And and at the next meeting, if if everybody was present, so there were seven people present, is it still four?
Yeah, it's four. It has to be a majority of.
A majority of.
The board. Not those present.
All right. It's it's playing a game of of numbers. Um. So the, so based on that, it did, it did not pass. The vote. Did not pass.
No. Um.
Can I ask a a question? Uh, so I was gonna say that uh, like in the previously was negative secret declaration and we had those reports and everything was done.
Yeah.
So that like it was, we had all that information.
Yeah. I think when that, when that project was approved, we had a a different makeup of the board at that time of of members. So it's kind of a new. Uh, it's a new membership that's reviewing the pro- project this time around. Um.
Can I just say a few things? And you know, I'm trying to be respectful of the fact that this did come before the commission in two thousand twenty-one and was approved. Uh, at the same time. You know, I wasn't part of the group uh, when that happened, you know, and I feel like. Trying to make a decision, not be totally bound by that. And otherwise, you know, it's just easy enough to rubber stamp it and some serious concerns have been brought up and. You know, this is literally the difference. Look at the numbers of who's here of this thing passing or not, you know, and I'm not opposed to it. I I want to see it happen. You know, I'm in the neighborhood a lot. And uh, the existing site is quite ugly, you know, and I would like to see something of the quality level of fifty Front Street. Uh, up the street at this this other location. So I mean, to hold this sort of close to the vest and say, well, we can give phase one and phase two, but it's proprietary. And uh, you know, we don't want to release it. I I respect on some level, but you know, if if that information should be provided to us with a sense of information that you feel would be. Um, not advantageous to release, have that withheld? You know, that's the difference between like right now, this thing being a yes or a no. I mean, I just want you to understand that.
I see. Um. So I have to do comments on it like, uh, so if uh. My en- engineer is is on call, like we can definitely have him on uh. He has all this information. My architect has all the information, phase one, phase two. And everything I'm telling you is is true and accurate because it's on black and white, the state has it. It's uh, those studies are step one. We always, like, before we. Decide to close on a site, first thing we do is phase one, phase two, but we go even a step further that we get an estimate.
Yeah.
Uh, normally, that's not. Normally, that's not open to the public, so I'm happy to share with any member of the board. That's my request was not to, that normally I've not seen that made public where it's because it's just information that is seen by lenders, it's seen by state, federal sources and banks.
Yeah.
They see this information all the time. But I don't think public sees it, so I'm open to giving it right away, I've got nothing to hide in there.
Sure.
We are very satisfied with it, that's why we closed on the property. And I have like if it helps, I have my engineer and architect on call. Like I can just dial them in and or they can call into the call in number and answer any questions about environmentally or anything like.
Okay.
I mean, I can't speak for anybody else and you know how if somebody wants to vote yes on it tonight, I certainly respect that, but you know, a certain discomfort level I have and oh yeah, we've got it, you know, I haven't seen it, but I'm going to vote yes for it is kind of a tough is a tough ask and I I can't speak for Chris and maybe that's where you land with it as well, but that's where where I land.
And I guess my question is that it just then hypothetically, because even my attorney is on, she's not available. She had a personal obligation, otherwise she would be here also.
Sure.
And she has been involved from the beginning of the project, so he has all the all that information too.
Yeah.
So my question is that even if, so if I had that stack of reports tonight here with me, would that have helped anybody?
We probably would need time to to digest it, I think that's the problem, I'm not not being able to read through it. Let me ask you this. If if the applicant were to submit a summary of what all of that says by his engineer, instead of the full all of that information that I could understand why why somebody, a developer would not want that to become public record or the news gets a hold of it, it becomes something that it's not, but they need to sell newspapers. If he were to
Even if it's a reduced summary, it's a five page, I mean, not a fifty page full doc. Anything the applicant shares with planning commission members is spoilable in public record. Nothing can be shared with us in camera, I mean, the Navy would have access to anything that's shared with us.
Yes.
So I, I don't know what the applicant, the attorney, you know, Sarah, Sarah Campbell, the attorney. And I see her name on these letters.
I think so.
Sarah before us all the time. Even if they put together a small five page, that can want to be, don't tell anybody, because for me, that's probably a question, anything you're going to share with us. I wanted to have anybody marked next to a bottleneck, the name across the street. Anybody in the neighborhood who's got concerned, hey, you're digging up a whole car. Yes, there's only fifty cubic yards and whatever those details are. If we're going to share that with us, I was concerned that, you know, it can't be shared with us secretly or privately.
Right.
It's a process.
That's right.
Yeah. I guess the question to you then is, is a summary that you could have written up, would that be better than submitting the whole document and you'd be comfortable with that or that would still give away the information?
No, it will definitely be better than putting raw reports, this is raw data. And so the attorney has seen it, the engineer has seen it, architect has seen it, state has seen it, like everybody has seen. Landing institutions have seen it and they're and they're always see this information.
Okay.
And what I'm telling you is that it's nothing that I'm concerned about.
Yeah.
But it's just, I think it would be better like a a summary from an architect or an engineer.
Yeah.
Would be better.
Okay.
And I think that that was done already by the engineer when he did the SW PPP and that long environmental form. That the the long AF that he submitted, he knew upon the examination of everything. So I think that we have already crossed that, but if it helps satisfy you, then I can, I'll speak with Sarah when she comes back on Monday, then maybe we can do, have the engineer do a summary. And I think that will be best because it will be based on, he, you know, he has the reports already.
Yeah.
So he can say, okay.
Okay.
Very minimal.
All right, so then that sounds great, is that that would make everybody feel more comfortable? Okay. So then the big question is, what does this do to your your timeframe, does this completely mess you up or if we had to table this?
It is definitely like, yeah, it is definitely adding on time that I was hoping there would not be added on.
Okay.
Because I thought that we had covered all these steps already and so that.
I just wondered what your thoughts are and just moving for a positive declaration.
Well, asking somebody to do an environmental impact statement, it's expensive. If you, I mean, I was assuming he would want to do it correctly and hire an engineer to to do that. That's a lot of work and a lot of time and I just would hate to do that if if a summary letter could satisfy a summary letter and a delay until the next meeting could satisfy that.
Yeah, it's a difference between one month and a year more.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess the only other option then would be a a special meeting to speed things up.
Steve, sorry, before you you get into that and I don't want to make it messy because I feel like there's one motion on the table already and I scrambled it up with a different option, but you know, could we give approval tonight conditional on having summary letter by X date, like whatever makes sense to us?
I would say probably no, just because the reason you want that summary is to get the number of votes you need for seeker. So and you wouldn't be able to vote on the project without doing seeker first. If that makes sense, I don't know if I explained that correctly, but
Yeah.
I would say no, probably not.
Okay. So yeah, so our next meeting would be, our scheduled meeting is July is July 11. If we had to wait until July 11th, so between now and July 11th, you submit the summary, everybody reviews it. In theory, they're comfortable with whatever you you presented. And we would do this again and and perhaps the vote is different in your favor and you move forward. But that delays you till July 11.
Right, I like your idea of a special meeting, if that can be done.
Okay.
That will save us the time.
Okay. So Tito, what would, is that an option for this time of year?
Yeah, we would have to redo public noticing because there's new information being provided. And so that would make the earliest we can meet again. Would be the 19.
June 12.
Uh, June 10. So that would be that would be the 20th, I'm just trying to make sure that the 16th can be done.
I don't know if we should pick a night tonight. We're going to get too many residents, I don't have my
Yeah.
days off.
Okay.
Taking a Friday, you think.
Yeah.
I don't know if I could be available on a Friday.
What?
But that being said, the 20th would be the earliest that you could.
Okay, so Tuesday, the 20th would be, all right, so is anybody opposed to a special interim meeting? If we can figure out a date that week? Okay, Manny, you sometime that week. Okay. Mario, you okay with a special meeting? Okay. So right now, we're tentatively thinking the 20th, Steve, how does the 20th look for you?
That looks good.
It looks good.
At the 5:15 time, I mean, anything in the evening is fine, but.
Okay.
I have one question, sorry, but I'm not trying to force your hand or anything, but I know it's so minimal. Would it help that since we are meeting tonight that if I was to get my engineer online who has on the architect both who they can testify that, you know, that they have these reports and then they have seen it and they can even open up on the computer and read you the facts of it or the summary, that helped?
Are they going to give our public record the pretty details of how many yards and what kind of ground and that's what I want.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, that's the kind of stuff that we, you don't release to public.
No, 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 what I mean is like they they have the summary, so that maybe you can read the summary. I don't know, I'm just asking that if that's possible, then I do have them on standby.
Would that help? We wouldn't have to.
Or if I
Okay.
Or or if I read it to you and I have it in my phone with a PDF file and I can pull it up and I can read it to you and I can show it to you. So if that helps, I'm testifying, I'm telling the truth.
That sounds reasonable, is it? Yeah, do you want to pull it up and read?
Because I know it's so minimal.
As long as you know, whatever you're reading is now public record.
Understood.
The practice, they're able to watch this live.
The millions of people that are watching this live are live on YouTube, so yeah, they're all waiting for it. Are you good at TikTok dances? Are you want to, is this your new calling?
Oh. James can tell just email me, oh, he's so nice, okay, so he while, because he's watching it live, he just emailed me and I'll be happily sure to you. He just emailed me the summary just now as I'm speaking with you.
That's great.
So I'm going to this is a three page letter, which I'll be happy to show to you with a site plan attached at the end of it. And I'm going, would you like me to read the entire letter?
It sounds like it, yeah.
Okay, great, it is written by AEI Consultants, March 17, 2021. My name on top, Mr. Salvage with Wallace and Corp., 237 West Lincoln Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, 10550. Regarding environmental conditions summary, five and 13-15 Elizabeth Street, 16 Gerard Avenue, 168, comma 169 and 171 Oak Street, Binghamton, New York, 13905. AEI project number 417434. Dear Mr. Rashford, AEI Consultants AEI has prepared this letter to summarize the environmental conditions and associated with associated approximate mitigation costs for the property located at five and 13-15 Elizabeth Street, 16 Gerard Avenue, 168, 169 and 171 Oak Street in Binghamton, New York, the site. The site is defined as tax parcel numbers 160.24-1, comma 2, comma 6 and 7 and 160.32-5 and 6. Background, AEI completed a phase one environmental site assessment ESA, which included the site, AEI project number 417434. According to the phase one ES, phase one ESA reported dated dated March 11, 2020, the site is located north of Gerard Avenue and separated by Elizabeth Street and Oak Street. The site includes two buildings located west of Elizabeth Street, constructed between 1959 and 1965. The buildings are constructed on S slab on grade. The site is currently vacant, but is proposed for development as multifamily residential housing through demolition of existing onsite structures and construction of one multi-story building, associated support facilities and landscaping. The next section is titled Environmental Investigation Findings and Recommendation. A limited phase two subsurface investigation was subsequently completed by AEI to address the Rex R E C S described above. The subsurface sampling locations along with the proposed development areas for the site are illustrated on figure one. As summarized in AEI's limited phase two subsurface investigation report dated May 21, 2020, the results of the limited phase two subsurface investigation indicated the following. Bullet point number one, the geophysical survey did not identify anomalies or other evidence of underground storage tanks, USDs, at the suspected location of the tooth, 2000 gallon gasoline and other USDs to the south of 13-15 Elizabeth Street Building. The key word is did not. Therefore, no additional investigation of the area appears warranted. The next bullet point, the analytical results did not indicate the presence of contaminants in soil, soil vapor or groundwater greater than the applicable New York State Department of Environmental Conservation NYSDEC restricted residential soil cleanup objectives and therefore should not recruit development of the site for its intended use, i.e. multifamily residential housing with municipal supplied potable water. However, volatile organic compounds VOCs, 1, comma 1, comma 1, dash trichlorophene and 1, comma 2, comma 4, tri methylbenzene were detected in soil at one location SB-11 at levels that exceed their respective NYSDEC protection of groundwater NY-PGW standards. This suggests a potential for these constituents to leach from the soil and impact groundwater. AEI also noted the presence of a former painting booth and vent structure present at the existing Elizabeth Street Building. Although no contamination was detected above applicable NYSDEC SEOs in the soil sample collected, collected within the paint booth area and no obvious signs of contamination associated with the exterior portions of the paint booth structure were identified. Dismantling of the paint booth structure and offsite disposable of the vent structure and other component warrants the use of best management practices during demolition. Based on the localized presence of VOCs in soil at SB 11, where VOC impacts above NY-PGW standards were detected, removal of impacted soils in the immediate area of SB 11 is recommended to prevent further, to prevent, to prevent potential future groundwater impacts. Next section, estimated remedial remedial activities and costs. Bullet point number one, recommended impact soil removal and backfilling at soil boring location SB 11. After removal of the existing five and 13-Elizabeth Street Buildings, excavate soil at the boring SB 11 location over an area of approximately 15 feet by 15 feet in dimension. Based on the depth of contamination noted at boring SB 11, 6.5 feet beneath ground surface, excavate soil to a depth of 10 feet BGS at SB 11 area. Collect and analyze four sidewall base post excavation soil samples for VOCs. Backfill the excavation with clean fill to match the surrounding concrete surface grade. The estimated cost to complete the above remediation is $57,000. Two optional, bullet point number two optional, site management plan. AEI will review the site redevelopment plans provided by the client's site civil engineer or architect to identify site engineering controls that will limit human exposure to impacted or potentially impacted soils, AEI will then prepare a SMP for use by the client that includes the following. A site plan illustrating the engineering controls needed at the site. B, a description of the acceptable construction materials, thicknesses, etc. for the engineering controls. C, methods for identifying conditions that may constitute a failure of the engineering controls. D, protocols and timeframes for notifying regulatory authorities and conducting repairs for disturbance or modification of existing engineering controls. E, biannual inspection and reporting requirements. And F, best management practices for prolonging the integrity of the engineering controls. The estimated cost to complete the SMP is $3,100. Note that this letter has been prepared for information purposes only, based on the results presented in AEI's March 2020 Phase One ESA and May 2020 Limited Phase Two Subsurface Investigation Reports and subject to the limitations and reliance Uh, investigation reports and subject to the limitations and reliance. Uh, presented therein. Please do not hesitate to contact the undersign at seven three two four one four. Twenty seven twenty, if you have any questions or require additional information, thank you sincerely. AEI consultant, consultant, Dave Bowsmith, professional engineer, region operations manager, site mitigation. Enclosures, figure one, site map, the end.
Alright.
Would you be able to forward that to us for our records?
Yes, I can. I'm open to forwarding it. Uh, I I myself am a civil engineer by education. Graduate of Polytechnic University, which is now a part of NYU. Uh, from the summary of it, what it's saying is that an area. Boarding's uh, location SB eleven. Fifteen feet by fifteen feet by ten feet deep, scoop it up, fill it up with clean dirt. And we will do the site management, so that's going to cost fifty seven thousand and we all, they will also do a site management plan. Which will cost thirty one hundred to make sure that everything's being done properly and we said yes to that, so we are just waiting for the financing and then we'll have them do that.
Great. Oh.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Thank you very much and thank you, James, for, he's listening, for listening keenly and for sending such information. Thank you very much.
Alright.
I'll forward you that immediately if you tell me which email to send you.
See, forward it to me and then I'll, I'll upload it on Basecamp and put it in our records for for this address.
Alright. Yeah, um, alright, so there, do I need to read that whole thing again, seeker, or can I just re? Remotion it? Okay. Alright, so based on the uh, the previous motion and the new information provided by the applicant. Um, I'll remotion the negative declaration for seeker review.
Second.
Alright, so goodbye Steve, all in favor? Alright, look at that, five in favor, zero opposed. Alright, should we still meet in July or uh, June twentieth, just for, just for fun? Alright, so that's a five to zero uh, approval for seeker. And then. Tito, you want to?
Just wanted to remind you to add the motion to reduce the parking requirement by four spaces.
Okay. Uh, alright, and then. For the parking spaces? Okay. Alright, so I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met contingent on. Uh, a reduction of four parking spaces or with the inclusion of a. Planning Commission approved reduction of four parking spaces. Alright, second by Chris, all in favor? Alright, that's five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much and I have, I have emailed, you can check it, I have sent the letter.
Alright. That sounds great. So you have, you have both approvals and you're off and running.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate everyone's time, everyone's question. It was a pleasure to see our neighbor. We're working on it very. Thank you very much, Andy.
Alright, thanks, thanks for working through that with us.
Thank, thank you very much.
Alright.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Alright, good luck.
Everyone have a very good evening. Thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you. Alright, so that concludes public hearings and deliberations. And so we'll move back to election of chair and vice chair. Tito, how does this work?
Um, somebody makes a nomination that's seconded and then you vote and then you repeat that for vice chair.
Alright. Uh. Chris.
Second.
Thank you, second by Steve, do I vote or? Alright, uh, all in favor of that?
Aye.
I'll pay Mario after the meeting. Alright, that's uh, five in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, so Joe is currently our vice chair, but if uh, if somebody else is open to this. Um, Joe's schedule is getting a little bit more wonky, uh, unpredictable. So I'd like to make a motion to nominate Chris as our vice chair, if he's okay with that. Okay, sorry, seconded by Steve, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Same thing, another twenty coming Mario's way? Alright, that's five in favor, zero opposed. Alright. Alright, Chris, I meant to talk to you about that before the meeting, but uh. I. Uh, I try and keep my calendar open, so it doesn't happen very often, but um. Alright, I'll send it. I'll send it your way. Uh. Alright, so that's uh, election of chair and vice chair. Uh, any other business?
Yeah, so two twenty one Washington Street came to the commission a few months ago for a underground. Uh, amenity space. Um. They have asked the question whether or not the planning commission would be okay with those partitions that were required. Being eight feet tall, which does not reach the ceiling in the basement. The reason why is that if they make those floor to ceiling, they need to redo redesign their fire suppression system. If they keep those walls at eight feet, then the sprinklers could hit what they need to hit. Um, the question is, is the commission okay with those walls being eight feet? Or do you think that that does not meet the goals of those walls, which is to keep it from being a communal, one large communal space? Um, the study rooms and everything, the floor plan as we see it would remain the same, so where there are doors that can be closed, those are still there. The locations of the walls are still there. Uh, the question is, is eight feet enough?
Good question. Uh, I'm okay with eight foot, but how's everybody else feel?
That make it even harder to party because if you're in the next room studying, you, you're going to be able to hear them.
That's true.
Giving them the benefit of the doubt.
But maybe I'm just too cynical.
I'm, I'm good with it.
You're good with that? It meets the intent of what we're trying to do, I think, right?
Fire suppression, good, I'm pro fire suppression.
Alright, Mario. Do you need a vote on that or?
Oh, that's, no, it's not an official vote, but I think that was unanimous.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, so.
Yep. Okay. Alright, any other business? No? Alright, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Five in favor, zero opposed. Mario's on fence on everything tonight. Alright, thank you, everyone.
Yeah.